All you need to, there you go. And you are now recording.
We're up to five, Mark.
Uh, no, I've got six. We've got Jesse, we've got Chris. You, me, Lois, and Bobby.
One, two, right.
Scott Shoal is in as an attendee, can uh? Can somebody promote him? Maybe I can, right?
Yeah, you or Elizabeth.
I just did it. How about that? Let's see if he shows up.
He's gotta get to his son's game.
There's Scott.
Thanks for the promotion, guys.
Oh, that's good.
You're not getting a pay raise, but you got the promotion.
I know you'll take what you can get, right, Scott?
Right, that's right. Um, anybody else show up? Uh, we're good with the quorum. And, uh, all right, so it's six oh three, um, let's. We are recording, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Good. Okay, so we'll call a meeting to order. And, uh, this is a meeting number forty-two, for those of you who are interested. And thank you, everybody, for that. And, uh, thank, uh, Scott Charlo for setting this up in Nancy's absence. And Elizabeth is taking over as a host. Okay, good. All right, um, so, uh, I believe I've got the attendance in hand here, so we're good with that. And, uh, under old business, we've got minutes from April sixth. Anybody have any amendments they'd like to make to the minutes? Let's see any hands.
There was one tiny little conversion from a OT to a TO, but I don't know where it was that I didn't.
Oh, I, you know what, I, I have that marked, so I'll let, uh, I'll let Nancy know about that. And there was also, uh, an errant dollar sign.
Right, that was confusing.
Uh, yeah, it was thirty-two hundred square feet, a description of one of the rental properties, and it had a dollar sign in front of it, it shouldn't have had that, so. That's all I had. Anybody else have that? All right, do we have a motion to approve minutes as so amended?
So moved. Second.
I seconded by Mr. Berman. Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hands. And anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. All right, new business, uh, committee reports, uh, we'll start with, uh, Maxine on outreach, anything, anything new yet?
No, we have not met, um, but we're planning to meet next week, so no report tonight.
Questions for Maxine? Okay, uh, programming and, um, space planning. Leah, you're here, right?
I'm here. Uh, no report right now.
Okay, oh, I lost you. There you are. Everybody keeps moving around on the screen, you know, it's hard. Uh, okay, questions for Leah? All right, uh, Bob.
No report at this time.
Um, what I, what I would like to say under this topic is that, um, we did ask everybody to send in questions, uh, because we're gonna be interviewing a week from tonight. I know we got some, uh, we have a good set of questions that were used, uh, for the human services facility. Um, so, uh, between what was sent in, please, if you have questions, um, that you'd like to ask, uh, please send them to me or Nancy, uh, we'll collate them, uh, filter them, um. Probably the best way to do it is, is, um, how we did it for the human services facility, and that's the chair just asks all the questions, and if anybody else on the committee has questions during interviews, uh, we're not uh, limiting it to just the ones we have, so, you know, anybody will be able to ask questions, but if you have something that you want, ask them, every single candidate, uh, get them to me or Nancy. And, um.
Mark, excuse me, but I don't think I ever got the materials to review.
Not, nothing?
I didn't get them the first time around, and I haven't gotten them since the last meeting.
I'll make sure Nancy gets those out.
Uh, she, uh, maybe, you know, I do drop the ball sometimes, but I, I didn't see that.
Okay. I will ask her to get that out to you. To everybody, yeah.
Lois, I'll send them out to you from my files.
Thank you.
Uh, questions for Bob, or this subject? Okay. So we are up to our director's report from, uh, Elizabeth, please.
I think Ava has her hand up.
Ava has her hand, I'm sorry, Ava, go ahead.
Um, I, I didn't get any of those materials either.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, the materials consisted of all of the, uh, the original proposals from all seven candidates. And Lois is still shaking her head like she never got it. Okay, all right, we'll, we'll get them out.
Thank you.
Hey, back to me.
Back to Elizabeth, please.
Okay, I was on vacation last week, so I normally have a lot to say, but I don't have a lot to say today. I know that I emailed the library building committee about the governor's continued attention on being green, specifically around electronic vehicles and the vehicle charging stations. And I know that that is something that we are currently assessing, um, in terms of the lead, um, but also as we talk about our parking lots. And I also know that Nancy was able to figure out everything we needed to, um, get to CHRO, um, as well as getting the state grant signed and all that paperwork to the state, so we're now in the next phase of that. Um, and just a reminder, library cards are free for all from birth. Thank you.
Questions for Elizabeth? Maybe you still have your hand up, is that from the last, uh? Okay. All right, so. Let's go to, uh, Deanna, to S K P.
So, yes, eh, hi, uh, everybody, um, couple of updates that we have. Um, one is that, uh, Richard and I were able to meet with the farm marshals, uh, for both projects. Uh, we met with farm marshal Roger Nelson for Proser. And Richard made yet, met today, earlier today with farm marshal Bill Lewis for the McMahon. Both are in agree, we, we checked with them, basically, the access, uh, the perimeter access to the. Minutes, both are in agreement with us for the perimeter, uh, I, I think you, you, Mark, mentioned a question.
Deanna, you're freezing up, I didn't hear the question. You're coming, getting out.
We're losing your signal. You're freezing up.
Oh, Deanna, you're completely frozen now.
You have a better location for your internet? All right, we'll let you make some adjustments, we'll, we'll come back to you. I don't know if you're hearing me, I hope you are. I just I think she's signing off and signing back on again. Let's give her a second.
Deanna, we can also try turning off your camera to see if that gives you enough audio bandwidth.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not sure if it's my computer, but if, I can repeat myself again.
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I was saying that, uh, Richard and I made, we met with both farm marshals. Uh, farm marshal Roger Nelson for Proser. And farm marshal Bill Lewis for, uh, McMahon. And both are in agreement of regarding the perimeter access for the buildings. Both are in agreement that the three sites, um, both buildings have three site access, as we discussed earlier. Uh, the, the Proser building, uh, the issue is in the Washbrook side where we, uh, well, they don't have, uh, access for fire trucks. Uh, the other three sides seems to be okay for, uh, farm marshal Nelson. And, um, for McMahon also, um, the farmers is in agreement that there are three sites for, um, for, um, perimeter access, except for the south side where, uh, it's getting pretty tight and close to the property line. Um, we, we just, eh, went overall with the, both projects, showed them the, uh, site plans that we have developed and our, our preliminary floor plans. And no other additional comments, uh, in general, there was a good reception from both of them about the projects. As regarding the farm marshals, um, the other, um, updates we have is in the emails that came out today regarding the trees for McMahon, for McMahon Library. Um, Richard sent this email about, we found two, um, memorial trees. Um, one located in the front side of McMahon along Blue Hills, and the others, the others, eh, tree uh, found on the, eh, parking lot side. So, I'm not sure if you want me to share, um, the site plan for my man to show you, but the tree located in McMahon on the parking lot side is planned to remain in our plans. But the question that we have right now is for the tree in the, um, Blue Hill side, front side of McMahon, the one, um, that Richard indicated is the Wheeler tree. The cherry tree that we're gonna need to relocate because it is in, eh, is located where the addition is gonna, is gonna be. So, we need some sort of direction from, uh, the library, from the building committee about, um, where are we gonna relocate that tree? If we need to relocate that tree, um, it says in memory of Carl Wheeler.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll do our research.
Okay, so, uh, basically, again, um, we're keeping or saving the, the tree, the in memory of Leona Kelmer. We're keeping that tree on the back of the building, and we need to work with you guys about the relocation, or what are we gonna do with the, uh, Carl Wheeler tree in the front. On the last, uh, topic that we wanted to discuss with, uh, the building committee is now, yeah, regarding Proser. Uh, the questions about the oak tree, uh, located on the south side. Uh, I think there were some emails earlier that, uh, Richard shared with you, uh, with everybody about, uh, the recommendation from the arborists to remove that tree. And still, uh, I spoke to Richard earlier, uh, before this meeting, and whereas we're still thinking that our, all the best recommendation that we're, we're doing is to remove the south oak tree. And keep the north oak tree, I think the north tree that it's, um, is okay, eh, that is in better shape, I, I guess. Um, we have that also indicated on our plans, uh, but again, that's, that's really, um, something that we need to also to, to talk to you guys to confirm that we're, you're in agreement of that, I know there have been a lot of comments from, uh, the, from people about, uh, the, to save those oak trees, but we don't think that's gonna be possible. Um, that, those are the three items I think that we wanted to discuss today with you, uh, regarding the projects.
Okay, uh, well, at our last meeting, we started, uh, to hear about, uh, that south oak tree. Um, and I believe we were waiting for your arborist and the town's arborist to get together on that subject. Is that, is that what everybody else recalls?
Yes.
And, um, so I guess, you know, this is a touchy, um, thing, it's an important thing to a lot of people, all of us and uh, the public, uh, so we need to, um, make sure we've got. Um, I would like to see a report, you know, something in writing. That.
Yeah, I haven't seen.
Lanes, but, you know, I think, uh, you know, I think we understand what you're saying. Um, but I wanna make sure we're, we have consensus from, from the professionals from both sides. Um, and then, uh, you know, the committee can consider that.
Okay, so let us, let us go back to talk to our arborists to see the status of that, because I thought we were gonna see something. But I haven't heard, we haven't seen any reports or any, any communications.
Okay.
But we can touch base with, uh, with our arborist and see if, uh, there was any, um, conversations with, uh, the Bluefield arborist too. And if there is any report for that.
Right, right, I mean, we, you know, we wanna get all the information we can. Uh, you know, and, and I think it needs to be in writing to, to really understand, yeah, yeah. Um, that's a, a, a major consideration, so, um, so let's get it right. Um, I have faith we will get it right. But it's in process, so. Thanks, uh, questions, comments for Deanna? Lois?
I have two questions, um, one is, did you talk to them about the sprinklers for McMahon? And did they agree that they were not needed?
Well, I wasn't in the meeting today, um, let me, eh, talk to Richard about that. Um, he said that the, the pharmacy didn't have any issues with the way we are, um, showing the building right now without the sprinklers. He did, uh, mention, um, the question about the build, the new building code that is coming in October, I believe, twenty twenty-two. That, that was the only comment, but I can check with Richard and confirm about that. I'll, there were conversations about that, that someone from the building committee was gonna check, I think it was Nancy, was gonna check with the insurance, uh, company to see if there, there are any issues about, uh, McMahon, the addition and not having, uh, the building sprinkler.
That's correct, that's correct.
The second question is the, um, issue about the ability to exit from the large, uh, conference room or the large, um, room at Proser in case of a fire, do we have the right number of exits in the right places?
Yes, right now we do, I believe we have, uh, three, eh, three doors, three exits on the community room. Um, one is directed to the porch, to the street. And the other two are, um, compliance protocol.
Thank you.
You know, uh, what, what I'd like to do is, you know, we're basically at the end of schematic design. Um, I mean, I never wanna limit ideas or questions on anything in the design, uh, but obviously, the architect has to keep moving forward. Um, you know, I wanna make sure anybody has any design issues that, that we hear from you tonight, uh, or, and, and going forward too. Um, cuz it really is kind of a, uh, you know, a milestone here where we're at with, with schematic design. Um, I mean, I think the line is a little fuzzy between schematic design and design development. I, I think the documents that we've seen from the architect have already gone into some design development, there's a lot of details there. Uh, so, um, I just wanna make sure everybody's on the committee has an opportunity, if you have any schematic design things, uh, remaining to be addressed that, that we hear from you. Um, Elizabeth, I see your hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to go on the record again, asking for more glass um, and a bit more of a see-through vibe at the Proser facade, um.
You're talking about the western facade?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's been expressed by a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of committee members, um. You know, that that western facade needed, needed more, and we, and Tyseu did did say that he was gonna be a dr, you know, working on that, Deanna, any progress on that?
Yes, actually, we are in the office working on, uh, several options on the west facade. Uh, you're gonna see some, uh, development on that one. We weren't, we were not ready today to present those because there's still several options being studied, but yes, we are addressing the west, uh, elevation. Um, uh, let me know, uh, let me touch with this to see when can we present those options, because I know that, where the office working with that, and there are several options for the west side.
Okay, I mean, I would hope that our next regular meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Would be reasonable.
Okay.
Bob Roman?
Yeah, just a couple of things, uh, and I think I've mentioned them before, but I wanna mention again, cuz I don't know if they belong in schematic or, or in, uh, the next phase, design development. But number one, the bathrooms have to have, um, push button for, to open the doors, no cells. Also, all interior doors should be card access, not keys. Uh, because keys, I know they say don't duplicate, it can be duplicated. Card access means that if somebody no longer works there, sh- or shouldn't have access to that, it's easy to reprogram that. And we already have that capability in town, so, uh, I, I want you to keep that in mind when you're going forward with stuff, thank you.
And, uh, Lois?
I just wanna second Elizabeth's comments about the western side. Because the, once the building is up at three stories, as you come from the west toward the center of town, it is a place where it will make a substantial statement that Blowfield is here, this beautiful building is here, and you're welcome here. And, uh, so I think that's really, really important that we get the west side to be as welcoming as, as the rest of the building is now. I, I have a bunch of little things, Mark, which I sent to you, um, relating to things like having electric fireplaces in both buildings, looking as if we could use pavers instead of, of the normal paving in the in order to get the runoff, uh, to be less, and a lot of little things like that, I'm not sure where they get addressed.
Um, I mean, those couple of things you mentioned, I, I, I would think are more design development that we can get into, you know, in, in the coming months. Um, if there's anything else that, you know, that comes up, we'll, you know, we'll take them as they come. Um, like I said, I don't wanna limit anybody from expressing concerns or ideas at any time.
I just encourage everybody to go through those documents that we got. Um, I'll just show you one little thing that I mentioned reading or noticed reading through them, and that was the plan to turn off the water, which presently goes to Riley lumber. And I can see that having that water available in the, in the parking lot area, even if it's locked up, could be very helpful if there's some kind of community project that the library wants to do, a, a festival or something in that space. And I suspect that all of us might notice little things that would make a difference to making the library, um, even better than it's going to be.
Yeah, I think that's, um, that's a good comment, um, Deanna, if you can, you know, look into that, how we keep that water line accessible for the future.
The water line on the Riley numbers, the parking lot, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There, there's a, you know, a stub out now that's just called to be capped.
Okay.
Below grade, but, uh, if we can, um, you know, somehow have it accessible without spending a lot of money, cuz I see Scott having fits over there every time we mention something, these dollar signs, so, um. Um, I have, I have a few things on my list, um, I'm gonna defer to anybody else first. That wants to, uh, has any schematic design items, don't see any hands, um. Uh, first thing is the, um, just making sure that, you know, that western facade, we keep mentioning it, but I think the bridge, uh, same comments apply to the bridge, that it feel welcoming. Uh, and I know there was a, uh, a bump out planned for it now, so you have a place to stop. Um, look at the brook, rest, whatever, um. But I think in terms of the overall design of that, which we haven't seen yet, really. Um, we, you know, it's been hinted at, but, but, uh, it should be welcoming as well. There was talk in, in one of the past, uh, space planning and programming meetings about rearranging the service desk for the children's area. Uh, has there been any direction or progress on that, Elizabeth and, and Deanna?
Yes, we are still talking about that, um, in terms of if the information point of contact will be where it currently is, or if it'll be in the center of the room. Um, so we're still, uh, working that out and are connecting with Deanna about that.
Okay.
Yes, Mark, we're still working on that area, um, there are some changes probably com- coming. I, um, shared the information I got from Allison, um, we got more specifics about the square footage on the linear feed equipment that they need on the, on that area, so we're working on that.
Good, good, um, and, um, I had made a lot of comments about the site design where, where it stood two weeks ago. Uh, and, and I think there, there's more work to be done on it at a schematic level. Um, just to make some of those open areas, the groves, the, the lawn area, just more friendly, a little more usable, um, so, you know, I don't wanna, uh, you know, I'm trying to, in this meeting, identify what we know now is still sort of in the schematic realm uh, as we move forward, so, um, so I wanted to mention that. Uh, we still haven't, uh, finalized the traffic pattern at Proser. Uh, the engineer at the site, uh, this, um, traffic engineer I know is, is still working on that. So there's that, um. And I don't wanna forget about access from the Riley parking lot uh, to the west, to the shopping area. Uh, that was something that the design review board thought would be a good idea, I think it is a good idea, so let's not forget about that. And do, do we have any other lead decisions with regards to the HVAC systems to make? Or, or have we settled on the HVAC systems? I know we, we're, I know we need to have another lead meeting, and I know there's considerations.
Yeah, so, so what it is on the documents right now, uh, the HVAC design is, is based on the, um, recommendations from the energy modeling company? That's where we're showing right now. Um, is, we wanted especially, uh, the facilities manager, Glenn Garrity, to look into that, because one of the issues is that, um, some of the, eh, equipment, the, the, the units need, um, access doors, need the maintenance, I believe, is twice a year, so that's why we wanted some feedback from, from him especially, to see if, eh, if he has any comments or any questions. Uh, again, the design is addressed, is, is addressing, of course, based on the comments from the energy modeling. Uh, Mark, going back to, um, the traffic, I reached out today to SLR. And they told me that they were still waiting to get, um, approval for their proposal. I thought they were already, uh, working on that, but they said that they haven't received, uh, um, the agreement back. Um, I was gonna, um, we talked to Nancy, I think she's back next week, right, so.
Yes, yes.
This is very important, um.
Yes.
Um, we are kind of waiting on that, eh, you know, we, we kind of show it right now, I think a two-way traffic is still for Proser, but we need, um, we need to get that, um, the final report.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, that's what I had, uh, for, um, what I thought were schematic design things, so. Anyone else? All right, and let's.
I just wanted to say one more thing, I really meant for glass on all walls if possible. So my vote is for just more glass in general, on all walls, not just the west wall, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to, um, Downs, uh, Scott and Tom are here. With the project update.
Good evening, everyone, just get my screen up. All right, can I have one seat? Yes, okay.
Yep.
All right, so, um, we've updated the, uh, project financial summary, uh, based on updated, uh, invoices to date, mostly, uh, T S K. we've updated the project financial summary based on updated invoices to date, mostly TSKP invoices that have come to fruition. So we're just keeping up to date with invoices that are going through the town for this project, all right? For schedule update, so we have received the schematic design, we've been adamantly working on the estimate. And we're looking to be complete with the estimate for schematic design by the end of this week. Or then we will start reviewing that with the design team and the committee. The, so we did receive abatement reports. We started receiving some of them about the site last Thursday, and we received the last of them this morning. So that's kind of what's holding us back a little bit from completing the estimate and waiting to finish some MEP numbers as well. But we are going through all the hazmat documents that we've received from SLR, and we're putting that again, together accordingly. For the library grant contract status, so I did talk to Leah and was able to reach out to Maria from the library grant board, and I did inquire about the scheduling that they have in regards to submitting an application for a grant. And they actually have confirmed that they don't perform any special considerations if a town has two libraries going at once. So no matter what, that schedule of June submitting your application and then it getting reviewed in September and then going for an approval in November, still holds true. The only thing that Maria did mention is that after the 21st, if you receive approval, for instance, for the McMahon Library, you can immediately send your confirmation of funds that the town has in the letter, like we did for Process, for Proser. And they will send that to the Bond, Bonding Commission, so that when they meet in December, we can, you know, the town can get on the list for an approval. So that's, now that we kind of know that's set in stone, we need to look at that a little harder as far as the schedule and bidding requirements and come to some determinations. Anyone have any questions?
Questions for Scott? So, so to kind of summarize where, where we're at with the McMahon state grant. They're not gonna change the schedule for us. So we'll need your analysis on, you know, if we do go ahead with the grant and follow their schedule, what kind of, what that does for us. You know, what costs, we know we're gonna incur more costs to go down that road, so. So we need your analysis of what that is. And I know we were also gonna look at they won't, the state won't change their schedule, but they may allow us to focus those monies on something specific. Correct? We maybe, that's, that's a question in our mind, right?
Yeah, I was waiting to hear on, back on that one. I haven't gotten those.
Yeah, I know we don't have an answer to that, but that would, that would allow us to follow our own schedule.
Yeah.
Potentially, and then spend the money on something down the road, like furniture only.
That would be helpful.
Okay, all right, so, so we're still waiting to hear on, on the implications of that.
Yeah.
We know the overall schedule isn't gonna change. Okay, questions for Scott and Tom, beside my comments? All right, so we have invoices to approve tonight, so we've got two invoices from TSKP Studio. The first one being got, let's take the one from McMahon invoice number two, two, oh, one, oh, three, dash, three for thirty thousand dollars, which represents the remaining balance on schematic design for McMahon.
I move approval of twenty-two, oh, one, three, dash, three, second.
Moved and seconded, any other comments?
Mark, it is my understanding that although we are now paying for schematic design in full, we are not suggested, suggesting that by making that payment, he has completely completed the schematic design, as, as we have mentioned tonight.
That's correct, I think that's one of the reasons I want to make sure we, we made it clear what items are still being looked at from a schematic design phase point of view.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on the motion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Jesse, you still there? All right, Jesse, thank you. Okay, we have unanimous approval. That, second invoice is similar for Proser invoice two, zero, zero, eight, oh, two, dash, three in the amount of one hundred and four thousand dollars, which is the balance for one hundred percent complete of schematic design on Proser.
So moved.
Moved by, seconded by Mr. Berman. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Jesse, one more time, if you would. Thanks, sir. All right, motion passes unanimous. Thank you for that, all right, so. Future meetings, regular meetings, we've got May fourth and May eighteenth. I will not be here on the eighteenth. Bob, you're around?
Yep, I'll be here.
Great, thank you. And let us know if you cannot make either one of those meetings. And we have a special meeting scheduled for one week from tonight. Five PM for our OPM interviews. That's gonna be executive session, so everybody on the committee is invited, construction manager is invited, our architect is invited. So that's gonna begin at five. Anything else on future meetings? Okay, comments from the committee, anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Most likely. All right, let's go to public comments. Elizabeth, you have control of people with hands raised from the public? I don't see.
No one has their hands raised.
Or hands raised, okay. All right, thank you everybody from the public for attending. If there's nothing else, then I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Right, second by Mr. Berman, all in favor? Raise your hands, all right, the motion passes, so I thank everybody. And take care. I'm gonna stop the recording.
Good night.
Night, thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Tom.